may not vote on items five through twelve, fourteen, seventeen through twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-two through forty-five.
All right, those items are now before us. If there's no one wishing to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next, move on to our closed session items.
Hello, everyone.
What's up, everybody? How are you?
Ask our budget finance chair, Mr. Blumenfield, if he has recommendations on items fifty-two through fifty-six.
Yeah, not fifty-seven we're gonna hear in closed session here, but fifty-two through fifty-six, we heard in Budget Committee.
Sorry, I'm like, yeah, we didn't miss anything. These dickheads are still talking to each other. There's no public comment yet.
There's no members who have questions.
We've missed nothing. Except for them babbling.
Mr. Clerk, if you could please read.
For two minutes.
settlement recommendations, and then we can vote on them collectively.
Thank you, Mr. President. For item fifty-two, in the case entitled Brenda Baca versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
It's too much.
Three, in the case entitled Israel Hernandez et al.
Worked three jobs.
City of Los Angeles et al.
It's too much.
There is a recommendation to expend up to three hundred thousand dollars in settlement. For item fifty-four, in the case entitled Moises Alvarado versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in settlement. For item fifty-five, in the case entitled Nicholas Kobe versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to three hundred seventy thousand dollars in settlement. For item fifty-six, in the case entitled Moreno Hernandez versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to expend up to a hundred fifteen thousand dollars in settlement.
All right, those items are now before us. Do any members wish to be heard on those items?
Sup, Brock?
Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
They come in here all the time, bipolar. He comes in here all the time.
Eleven ayes.
Street people.
Very good.
I like his count because it tells real shit.
Business that we can address at this point, Mr. Clerk, or shall we move on to public comment?
Mr. President, the council may now proceed to public comment.
All right, if you could please read in the instructions, please.
Thank you. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comments should call six six nine two five four five two five two and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six and then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request a speak.
Nothing yet, Jenon. Soon.
When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute. Let me repeat, call six six nine two five four five two five two and use meeting ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six and then press pound.
Is great, Riley.
Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request a speak.
Baby.
When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute.
To members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak.
Oh, Turtle, I'm just burnt out, man. Too much, too much. Tried to do too much.
Speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up.
Three jobs is enough.
When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not speaking on topic.
Hi, Cat. Thank you so much for the huge dono, Cat. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate you.
Brief warning from your president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are one through four, forty-six through fifty-one, and fifty-seven. For members of the public calling in to speak, when it is your turn to speak.
I don't like his tie. I don't think it matches, but all right.
Will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself.
I mean, I'm like, not much for paisley things anyways, but. But a gold and blue tie with a gray suit, I don't know.
Forfeit your time, and we will move on to the next speaker.
I mean, they're technically supposed to go together, I guess. Blue, gray, I get it.
Computer, channel thirty-five, or another device.
Stinks is good. He was just here.
On those devices immediately when it is your turn to speak. Because of feedback and a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, it will cause a lot of confusion if you continue to listen to your other devices. Finally, for our callers, please keep an ear to the phone so that you know when it is your turn to speak. Thank you.
Matches the mic.
I'm gonna call out a number of names.
Maybe that was it. I missed it.
Your name, if you would please make your way to the.
I mean, I don't like his tie either. His tie is fucking ugly too. Look at that thing.
Then the sergeant will be able to.
Red, yellow with a fucking brown ass. I guess that's brown.
Genesis Coronado.
Gray, brown, I don't know. Sand?
Adina Tesler, Kate Ucel, and Anastasia Canyon. And Jeff.
I just trimmed my neck beard. Well, Mr. Sacks is right there, ladies and gentlemen. He ain't in jail. Mr. Harland's right there in the white. I see Mr. Harland. I see Mr. Sacks. I don't see Mr. Herman.
Good morning, Speaker. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am here speaking on item thirty-one and general public comment.
So, item thirty-one is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during your general public comment. So you have one minute.
Shells, tomorrow's your birthday. Sweet.
My name is Genesis Coronado, and I am here on behalf of Los Angeles Unified School District, speaking in support of item thirty-one relative to community school parks.
Happy early birthday, Shells.
We'd like to thank Councilmember Rahman and her staff for incorporating values and voices in this motion. We stand with the city in their goal to create greater accessibility to new spaces and park parks.
Look right behind her.
L.A. Unified stands ready to collaborate to bring the vision of community school parks to life. As highlighted on section two of the motion, we also highly support that the report take into consideration
That's him right there behind the speaker.
the necessary funding for programming and staffing to ensure the longevity of the community school parks program. Once again, thank you to Councilmember Rahman and Hernandez for bringing this effort to light, and we strongly urge your participation in this motion. Thank you.
Yeah, he's right there, Michael. He's studying up. He's getting his notes ready. Mr. Sacks right across from him, so two of the regs. Don't see Mr. Herman. I don't see Stacy Seguer, Belanger. But doesn't mean they're not on the other side where we can't see them or whatever, so.
Good morning.
Hi.
If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up on and the items you would like to speak on?
Hi, Kate Ucel, General.
Do they go live, Horton?
Okay. Good morning, council members. I am Kate Ucel, lesbian constituent of CD one. Save Morris Kite's home on Fourth Street. Why is his house on Fourth Street so important to the LGBTQ plus community? I've spoken here of my father, born in eighteen ninety-nine, fought in World War One, lived in L.A. in the nineteen thirties and twenties, twenties and thirties as a closeted gay man. He lived the dangers and terrors that were the daily reality of LGBTQ+ community before Stonewall.
She doesn't even know it.
A profound revolution took place that saved my life and that of many of my community worldwide. A revolution that's under attack today. Our history is so important to our struggle. We need all the help from allies that we can get.
Think she may have had a stroke or something.
Save Morris Kite's home on Fourth Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think she had a stroke. Don't be mean. I mean, that's why she has a walking cane. That's why she's speaking that way. I mean, again, I don't know. I'm guessing, but.
Good morning, Speaker. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Item number forty-nine, Adina Tesler.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Council President and L.A. City Council Members. Adina Tesler, Regional VP at the Hospital Association of Southern California. I'm here today to speak to you about item number forty-nine, an initiative to limit compensation for healthcare leadership in the City of Los Angeles. We are very concerned that this measure will create significant disadvantages for local communities and the patients within those communities, and ultimately compromise the quality and affordability of healthcare in the City of Los Angeles. Our healthcare leaders oversee extremely complex organizations and are responsible for caring for patients from all neighborhoods and recruiting and leading thousands of healthcare experts, including doctors, nurses, and other healthcare workers. These leaders are also responsible for investing in appropriate and modern technology, equipment, and facilities, coordinating with other providers, negotiating with insurance companies, and ensuring that high-quality care is provided each and every day to the communities in Los Angeles. This measure will create an uneven environment.
Crowley, thank you so much for the nineteen months. You rock.
And retain the top talent in the city. Our concern is that qualified executives will choose to avoid impacted hospitals in Los Angeles altogether.
Welcome back one more time.
In nearby cities, harming the quality of care of healthcare in our city. This policy is deeply flawed, unnecessarily targets one industry, and would have severe consequences for the recruitment and retention of qualified leaders in our local hospitals.
Hi, Tommy.
Our hospitals, their workers, and leaders are critical to the health of Los Angeles residents. For these reasons, we urge the City Council to refer the measure to the ballot for the voters to decide. Thank you.
And really quickly, I want to say thank you to Chris for sending me these two awesome cards. I love it. They're going right in my PC there, not getting sold. Two Jordana Brewster cards. So awesome. Thank you, Chris. You rock. And Catherine, thank you so much for the water bottle. I'm gonna use it on the next show coming up here on Friday. I appreciate you. And that's definitely something I'm gonna use. I love it. Thank you, Catherine.
amended to say that the CAO report to change the effective date from July first, twenty twenty-three, to D thirty.
Catherine got me this huge, I mean, one, no joke, one gallon water bottle. That's like insulated, like hydro flask. So cool. So now I can fill that whole thing up and never have to be running out of water and.
Good morning, Council President and L.A. City Council Members.
Yeah, I got this cool shirt from Lonnie too.
Here on behalf of the California Hospital Association.
I love it.
Which represents the more than four hundred hospitals. I'm here today to speak in opposition to item number forty-nine, which would place limits on compensation for healthcare leaders in the City of Los Angeles. Our hospitals and hospital systems are among the most intricate and sophisticated organizations in the state and country, leading the way in providing cutting-edge patient care.
Thanks, Cortland.
Millions of people. They also manage a comprehensive network of patient and employee safety programs to uphold the highest standards of quality care. Hospitals must be able to recruit both locally and nationally qualified hospital leaders, including physician and nurse leaders. This measure will block those efforts and lead to a drain of top talent from our hospitals, which would significantly impact the quality of care our communities deserve. Additionally, this measure won't do anything to reduce costs or improve care in the community. For these reasons, we ask the council send this measure to the ballot to allow the voters to decide. Thank you.
How many health coworkers did they lose by forcing them to take a shot?
Coming up, I'm gonna call a few more names.
Didn't tell you that. How many left the state? I'm not taking that.
Mark Williams.
Garbage.
Mickey Jackson.
Does nothing for you. Not taking that. Well, you're gonna lose your job.
Good morning, Speaker. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Um, hello, council members. Today I would like to make a more general comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Okay. Um, hello, everybody. My name's Anastasia Canyon, and I'm currently a student in the Los Angeles County. A problem that I feel like could help bring the community better if the council members and general.
That's right, Eric. Don't you forget it.
On this topic respectively would be youth involvement and youth engagement. I believe that by bringing the youth together creates our community to be even more stronger and ultimately help face the more important issues and more deeper issues. And even though the youth may not be a voting age, I don't believe that the voting age is what makes you an important citizen. And I feel like if there were more programs implemented or just in general, maybe even in the agenda, like summer programs, I don't know. I guess it's up to you guys to decide. It would ultimately benefit the general. And that concludes my statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being with us. Next speaker, please.
Let's get the sane ones in here quickly, because we got the insane ones in the back.
My name is Mark Williams. I'm concerned citizens of South Central Los Angeles, Executive Director, and have a general comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Uh, Mr. Price orchestrated my kidnapping and false imprisonment to cover a criminal who directed millions of dollars away from children because they're not black. Why would the City of Los Angeles walk away from a half a million dollars in Prop K investment? Whenever you do something to cover a crime concerning hundreds of millions of dollars in bond funds, it's called obstruction of justice. Mr. Price goes now, but we will not be distracted by his relatively petty crimes, bigamy, insurance fraud, and so, so forth. The Los Angeles Police Department needs to prosecute the people responsible for kidnapping and false imprisonment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
He was kidnapped. Got away from your captor, huh? Not very good kidnappers. Gave you up, kidnapped you, didn't even get any ransom.
Good morning, Mickey Jackson. General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Yes, I, I am speaking again about Morris Kite's house on Fourth Street. Um, our history is so hidden that I, I don't know that everyone really understands what went on there. Fourth Street was the center before there was a center. Without Fourth Street, there would be no center, which means hundreds, even thousands of centers around this country and all over the world wouldn't be here. Something else might be here, but though it wouldn't be there. That was Morris's model. He conceived it. He wanted it to go all over the world. He was a brilliant, brilliant man. Um, he gave all the services that the center later gave. This house is more important than people realize, just because it's humble, because it's on a side street.
Hi, Red.
If you're a person of the people, you get that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As our next speaker is coming up.
All for that shithouse that's a one point three million. Looks like it needs to be torn down.
Camille Lewis and Arnold Sachs.
Good morning, Speaker. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Uh, Thomas Mulan, and I just want to make a general comment.
It's a house they want to save. That was, you know, gay activist, he passed. They want to keep the house. They want to buy the house from the owner, because the owner wasn't the man who died, not the activist. So they want to make it into like a center, you know, gay and lesbian center.
And, um.
Yeah.
Raise awareness to, and it's something that we wanted to do as teenagers who are students in L.A. County. I feel like it's something that we don't see enough of.
Yes, Sir Weston. But we don't know he was arrested either. He might have just been, you know, told him to leave for the day.
There were more, uh, if, if our age groups had more civic engagement. And also as somebody who moved here very recently, uh, I think it's something that would benefit the city a lot, you know, if we just saw more civic engagement.
What about Third Street?
All right.
It's on Fourth Street.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Thomas Mulan.
Thank you very much.
Here we go, Mr. Harland.
Good morning, Mr. Harland.
Good morning, Mr. Harland. He's got his clean backpack. He's ready.
Would you like to speak on?
Hi, I'm Donald Harland. I'd like to speak on agenda items one, six, eight, ten through fifteen, eighteen, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-three, forty-one, forty-four, forty-five, fifty, and fifty-one, and general comment.
Not all of the items that you listed were, are open.
Full wants to talk about everything. Give me twenty-seven minutes, please.
Forty-six through fifty-one.
Just say you want to talk about it all. Everything. All agenda items.
And fifty-seven. Okay, yes, uh, I noticed the first few agenda items, uh.
He got one minute.
The agenda item number one, uh, there's a right-of-way for sewers. Uh, there's.
Now they gave him three.
Quick claims for sewers.
Mr. Spindler's in there.
For sidewalks. Uh, I don't know why you need a right-of-way to install a sewer or a sidewalk. It just looks like a property grab or you're trying to grab infrastructure to cover for your illegal real estate developments. Uh, you don't need a quick claim for a right-of-way either. Uh, for sure, that's no, those items are no good. Uh, it just looks like you guys have political candidates blowing through here, their families, uh, you're just, uh, giving away real estate to foreign agents in exchange for political favors. It's really terrible what you have going on. Uh, and, uh, Agenda item number forty-five, healthcare executive pay. Uh, I know that you need to have a healthcare expert here in the city.
Forty-five is not open for public comment, so I can move you to general public comment if you'd like.
Forty, fifty.
Steve, I love your thinkings. I love you.
Fifty-one is, yes, open for general public.
Fifty and fifty-one. Uh, fifty and fifty-one are unlawful real estate developments that the City of Los Angeles doesn't pay for real estate developments. The City of Los Angeles, City of Los Angeles has never paid for housing. And I'm gonna make sure that no money out of the general fund is ever spent for housing in the city. The city doesn't provide housing. That's not the job of the city, and they don't, certainly don't build real estate. Uh, I seen, uh, last weekend, LAPD visiting these real estates that are being illegally developed. And instead of doing their job, what they did was they shot somebody or killed somebody who made a deal there. And then they put their guys in there. LAPD put their guys in there, and then they slapped a city sign on outside the real estate development. It just looks like you guys are approving illegal real estate developments and then having LAPD claim them. The corruption in the city is just ridiculous. You don't realize that you guys are spending somewhere around five hundred million dollars per session in the city. I, I can't imagine how much it's adding up to, because every time you build a new building or a new apartment building, that price expands several times. Uh, and you guys just keep on doing it. Uh, it needs to be stopped. Um, I don't, I, I would notice about a couple, oh, the Warner Center, number forty-one. The Warner Center Park, uh, you know that they've laundered over three billion dollars through there already illegally, number forty-one. Uh, that, that's my property. I own the Warner, Warner Center, me and my daughter. That's not for sale. I'm pretty sure there's something bad going on over there. They don't need money for parks.
General public comment?
Okay, I've heard several people bring up the Morris Kite House. It's not real. None of that stuff happened. None of that gay civil rights stuff happened. None of that happened. No, uh, donut store riots, nothing like that. That's my property. There's no Stonewall where secret gay meetings happen. There's no Hotel Number Twenty-Three where the Mormons are gonna send crickets to make you whack out. It's not real stuff. You guys need to be stopped. Another thing I noticed is Core Services. You need to get rid of Core Services.
I agree.
Cores are real bad. The Apple Cores, those are really bad, evil people. They need to be banished to the desert mostly. I wanted to tell, alert you guys, I presented to you a fake DWP budget where they're trying to do an alternate budget, also in metro an alternate budget. Need to be thrown out. These alternate budgets, they made up with.
Hi, Misty. Ah, I want to hear more about the donut riots and everything.
Very much, Mr. Harland.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harland.
Sacks, come on up. I've called everybody's name other than Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler, come on up. Um, and I have now called everybody who's signed up, so if, if you signed up, please make your way to the left-hand side.
Spindler coming up, Mr. Sacks coming up, two good ones. Oh, here we go.
Thank you, sir. Which items would you like to speak on?
Uh, I held number one, fifty and fifty-one, forty-eight and forty-six. And equal, and, and, um.
Three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Okay. Item number one refers to the SEQA Act of nineteen seventy. This is fifty-five years, almost fifty-three years later. It also mentions form and legality by the city attorney. Is it the city attorney sitting here or the city attorney's office that's gonna review this? And the ordinance that is put forth here, is it hung in two places? According to the, to the requirements of the city, ordinances need to be hung in two places. One is at the front on the first floor, and one is over here at the Public Works Building on Temple Street at the corner of, of Hope. No, it's Hope and Temple. It's supposed to be hung there. I don't know if it's on the eleventh floor or on the first floor, but I do know that it's supposed to be hung in two places. It very rarely is. But if you don't want to do anything about SEQA, then what's the hell the sense of getting the money from the federal government to go green? Who's in charge of making those changes? I know that AEG had to do a SEQA report for the stadium they were gonna build over here at Staples Center. They were charged with doing like a ten thousand page SEQA report. Why was a private company required to do this SEQA report when it's either the city, the state, or the county? No answer. Number fifty, there are no more Quimby fees anymore. Is that leading to a lack of parks in the city? Developers are supposed to leave funding for Quimby fees so that more parks, more parks could be developed. There's a lack of parks all over. Is that another good move by the City Council? Number forty-eight refers to the Workforce Development Board, the Economic and Workforce Development Department, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Who's getting the money? That's a lot of money for, for some, for the board to get. Is there a plan for this money? What is going on? Where is, where is the, uh, report for that money? Forty-six refers to AB twelve ninety fund. That came from the dissolution of the CRA. That was done over fifteen, almost twelve years ago by the state. The state decided under Jerry Brown, they were gonna get rid of the CRA funding. How come there's still twelve ninety funding being allocated to the city? Or to the county offices and not to the county districts? It would be better served if it went to the county districts so that people who were living in that district had an opportunity to have input on how that money was spent, instead of going to the county office or the city office.
Hey, little dad broski.
Used to pad legal, pad to pay developers.
General public comment?
General public comment. Yesterday, we had a very interesting visit from a guy who was dressed in the KKK outfit back in two thousand and eight. What kind of city is this that would entertain a Negro dressed in a KKK grand wizard outfit and then complain how racist it is? I always thought the KKK was pretty racist itself. Not that I've been involved with them, but I thought it was pretty racist. I thought Malcolm X was really racist. Kevin DeLeone says Malcolm X is, is related to the Votos and the Cholos. You're out of your fucking mind. That crew was living it. They were working out of New York City, running, running guns and cigarettes illegally out from South Carolina. They spent the majority of their time killing each other. How do you think they would have thought of Barack Obama and the Affordable Care Act? That was one of the most important medical, um, ideas to come.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks.
He was just getting good.
Everybody heard. Herman, Kawon, Muo, Camille Lewis, Jeff, Adele Hajakalee.
So Herman's in there. He's in there. They called his name.
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak on?
Well, um, all items and the general comment period.
So you have three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. As a reminder, the items that are open for public comment are one through four, forty-six through fifty-one, and fifty-seven. Please begin with the items.
That's right. Well, go ahead. Well, item one. Finally, we're gonna be able to take a successful shit.
What do you mean?
Well, a sanitary sewer is being dug. This was really suggested by Kevin back when he watches some of these meetings. He feels like taking some form of relief. And I agree. Yes, on item number one, flush that toilet and put it down there where it belongs. And then a number two, thank you Tracy Beach Knee Park for bringing us sewers. Finally, in Venice, we can flush the toilet, urinate, and take a successful shit. And all of those homeless can flush all their drug needles down there successfully without overflow. Let's give her a hand. Hey. That's good. To do that. Well, they violate the Clean Water Act all the time. Then we get to number three. It gets more exciting. CD number five, Katie Kunt Yaroslavsky also wants a successful flushing. Yes, on that one. And then CD number two, the Armenian Grosser Herder. The petty pink-skinned dictator wants us to also flush effectively and carefully. Flushing the shit. And that's good, because that fat wife of his takes a big one every now and then. And that's good because that fat wife of his takes a big one every now and then and it clogs the sewer system. Flush. Flush. And then we get to Tracy Park's important item in McCosker. Executive compensation. Well, executive compensation is important, and I support unlimited executive compensation.
Well, why's that?
Well, well, see, Kevin, what happened was the city's medical executive compositors knew that Current Price was married, not to his real wife, and they still paid her benefits. And then the city was asked, "Do you want reimbursement?" And the executive said, "Nah, that's okay. I pay you off anyway." So yes, we support that. And you wanna limit their compensation? What will these executives do without their private jet? What will they do without their expense accounts? What will they do without their $1,000 a night hotel and bottle exemption at the Ritz-Carlton? How will they get their prostitutes? Oh, look, I'm getting Mr. Marquis's attention when I mention booze and prostitutes. Yes, so I'm against it. And Tracy, you're a Republican, and McCosker, you're just a corporate scumbag. Vote no on this motion and stop this fascism.
General public comment?
And now we get to the item. Friday at 1 o'clock Pacific time, the soap opera will continue as the current price turns. Yes, it will be held, not on remote, in person only on a Friday, 1 o'clock. And it's only gonna be Marquis. One indictment away from the presidency, conflict of interest. Hey, you're right. And also the great one, the mighty Armenian part-skinned grocer herder. And they will together decide to suspend another council member, just like they did to Kevin DeLeon. And that's unfair. We want a conflict of interest waiver. We want eight council members appointed to the committee, and we want full remote public comment. So I'm not gonna call Paul Martin Cricori and a pink-skinned bitch piece of shit. No, I'm gonna end it a high note. I will merely politely say, fuck you.
Thank you. Your time has expired. I've called all the names twice now, so let's go next to the phones.
Man, you called Mr. Herman. Where's Mr. Herman at? The hell?
First caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
All right, I'll do 49, 47, and general comment.
Um, it's Andrew, um.
All right, starting off with item 47, a star for the Hollywood Walk of Fame. There's so many other things the city could be doing right now, but, you know, all the city's doing is another star for the Hollywood Walk of Fame, you know? Just, you know, not opposed to the Hollywood Walk of Fame and that person being put on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. But, you know, there's so many things the city should be addressing right now. All we're doing is just putting more stars on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. So let's focus on the important stuff right now. All right, moving on to item 49. Compensation for, regarding limiting compensation for healthcare executives. We should be using, the, the, um, the frontline healthcare workers need to be paid a lot more. But, you know, these, these healthcare companies are just, you know, paying their executives millions of dollars a year while they're, you know, healthcare, and then creating ballot measures to reverse and measure, to increase the minimum wage for healthcare workers. You know, why don't we have the healthcare hospitals and other medical facilities pay the healthcare workers? All right, moving on to general public comments. So for general comments, I'll just say that the, um, the position of council leadership is cursed. Marquise is probably the next one to go down. So, yeah, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that you're making Bob Bummanfeld the Assistant President pro tempore when he's literally like Kevin DeLeon's best buddy. Look at them during the meetings. They're always chatting with each other, laughing it up, you know? They've been doing that for a long time, even before the scandal. Bob Bummanfeld's probably also involved in the whole scam, implicated in the scandal. So you shouldn't be president, Assistant President pro tempore. Kevin DeLeon needs to go. The LAPD cops need to go. Most of the, you know, most of the council needs to go. Kevin DeLeon needed to resign months ago. It's ridiculous that he hasn't-
18 ums, not bad. Not bad. 18 ums he got in there.
Thank you. Next caller.
And that's all I could make out 'cause his phone was so bad. Full of that fucking dial-up internet.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Caller, where's my girlfriend?
Okay, you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Item 49 is regarding limiting compensation to healthcare executives. Um, this is kind of a piecemeal motion. It would make more sense to, um, have single payer healthcare.
She's just as bad with the ums.
Would solve way more issues than this, but I will say, you'll notice that the proponents in the chambers today are the opponents of this measure. The people who say, "We need these executives to make, you know, absorbent amounts of money because look at the important work they do. And if they're not compensated like this, we won't get the talent that we need." However, that's never an argument made for raising minimum wage, raising workers' wages, improving workers' quality of life, work-life balance. So, I mean, if that talent doesn't want to be there for the crazy compensation that they get, maybe they could go be a nurse for a lot less money and see how they like that. So I'll move on to general public comments.
So smart.
I just have some things to read that were stated back in October. There is a lot of work ahead for the Los Angeles City Council to build back the trust of Angelinos. But the unwillingness of Kevin DeLeon to resign is a slap in the face to residents who deserve to move on from this shameful and abhorrent moment. Who said that? It was Councilmember Nithya Ramen. She also said, "I hope the people's call for resignation is heard so this hard work can truly begin." She also said, "I am looking at opportunities that the council has to restore trust and faith at this moment when we have really shaken the people's faith in those of us who are in City Hall right now." So I suppose that work has not begun because we haven't got a resignation and we never hear any peep from anyone when Kevin is presenting motions, adjourning motions, or anything in the chambers. So this is really just a, a pure and simple example of how corrupt it truly is, and shame on-
When you think you're smart, and I guess it's a white liberal thing, maybe not white thing, but definitely a liberal thing. Why can't you finish a sentence without saying um?
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
It's so bright, but every single sentence has to contain um. Why? Why liberals?
Okay, you have one minute.
Thank you. Uh, regards to what the city is doing, what you folks are doing, uh-
That's right, Eitan, you're watching. Um. Mr. Herman, right there. There he is. Came late. He's got his dog with him.
But I feel they're, they're being abused. Yesterday, I wanted to talk about, uh, street vendors, and to the street vendors-
Nervous habit, huh?
Our harvest for Latinos, the Native Americans, that's where we become millionaires. So please, don't give up. Keep working. But what I would ask is that when you're a community, clean up after, make sure that you leave the area as good as you saw it or even better. But again, the streets of Los Angeles are the best place to become a millionaire and to fulfill your dreams. Thank you.
Well, that is true. You can become a millionaire doing what you need to do and what you wanna do, if you're good at it. Mr. 50 Guns right there, the quick message.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
How come he didn't say um every two seconds?
Good morning. This is Brocklanders Private Investigator. I would like to speak on open items and general public comment.
So the items that are open for public comment are 1 through 4, 46 through 51, and 57. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
All right. Thank you. Uh, number 46, $530,000 for left turn signals at one intersection. This is almost as embarrassing as the first time I tried unhooking Christie Christiansen's bra that hooked in the front. At least I was able to practice and get better at it over time. I got to the point where I could do it over the shirt with one hand. This overcharging and overspending of taxpayers' money is only getting more embarrassing. 47 for the Walk of Fame, what's it gonna take to get stars for Smoke and Scan and Stinks? Number 48, workforce services. I've talked about this before, and unfortunately, nobody from the city council has reached out to me at BrocklandersLAPI@gmail.com. Why aren't we creating a program to train kids from the inner cities and people from the homeless camps in these construction trades and give them the ability to build skills so that they can start a career? Instead of just wasting it on the boards for workforce services that's just padding the pockets of, you know, cronies? 49, how did you not know this was a good idea until now? This is like Barack being against gay marriage until he needed the voting block. You might not like him, but never forget Trump was the first president elected to his first term openly supporting gay marriage. As long as they are getting kickbacks from Big Pharma and forcing shots on people, there should be limits on the amount of government funding that we're giving to these hospitals. General public comment, from yesterday's meeting, some advice for the boogers-on-the-wall lady? Why not start a business in front of the city council building? You could rent a kid to people that need a prop to try to get sympathy. LA is one of the richest cities in the world. LA should have one of the most powerful city governments in the country, especially since everybody is on the same team. With all of that, they, you guys still can't solve homelessness, homelessness, but you want everyone to believe that if we pay more taxes and do what you say, you can lower the earth's temperature. Everybody go to YouTube, see Smoke and Scan, hang out and let's watch some chases. Thank you.
Thank you, Brocklanders.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Awesome. I wonder if any of these guys have caught on yet and any of them have Googled Smoke and Scan. If any of them are watching right now.
Caller, what items would you like to speak on?
Any of you waste of spaces sitting on that horseshoe watching right now? Fuck you. It's for you and your whole family.
Call in user 1, please dial star 62.
Oh, she's doubled up. Turn your radio down.
Caller, you need to turn down the volume on your device because there's a delay. So turn off the volume on your device, and then you can begin speaking. Go ahead.
What's up, Paul? Yeah, Brock's great. Brock deserves a star. More than I do. Brock and stinks.
Caller, next caller. What items would you like to speak on?
Call in. Call in, guys, right there. 669-254-5252. You too can call in.
Caller with the last four digits, 3597, please click star 62 to unmute.
That's right, Jeff. Turn down Smoke and Scan before you get in there, though.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Which items would you like to speak on?
Perfect.
Agenda number 47, uh, 46, uh, general public comment as well.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items first.
Okay, so the Hollywood Walk of Fame, 40-
Anybody can call in, broski. Anybody.
Uh, 47. To honor Melba Moore with a Hollywood Walk of Fame, that is, that is awesome. But to also remember that she is or was a descendant of slave as well. So when it comes to honoring, especially blacks, with a Hollywood Walk of Fame, to honor those who have built and paved the way, not just entertainers, but actually who built this country. Then you have, um, of item number 46, I believe, the street light.
Hold on, let me look at this right quick.
So you have half a million dollars for a street light on Olympic and Normandy. Half a million dollars.
For one light. Makes sense.
There's a lot of mismanagement of funding, and we know through construction, through traffic, through development that you utilize our tax money as your personal piggy bank. Half a million, $530 million for a, a traffic light is horrendous. You have 42 migrants that came here on the bus last week and they got the utmost treatment while you have native Californians who are homeless who are being shipped in, shipped out to deplorable condition. These are the things that have to switch over when it comes to common sense. Now, Latia Stevenson, who came repeatedly with her children because you keep placing her in deplorable condition.
Boogers-on-the-wall.
Anita Wells in the mayor's office, who do not do follow-up with the agencies that you recommend, such as the Genesee Center. Heather Hutt, Ms. Davis actually put Latia Stevenson and her children out in the middle of the night last week, right? Okay, while you guys are sleeping in your bed. These are the reasons why she keeps coming down with her children, okay? Not to be a showcase, but to keep stating that this is not right, how you keep placing certain homeless families in deplorable condition. You have Varely Perez and Hoppix, who you honored, who continually place black families in deplorable condition. That's why she keeps coming out there. So the same treatment he gave to these 42 migrants, he gave them jobs. They only came here a week. They only got jobs for re-inification, been put up in the nicest hotels downtown. 42 of them. I want the same treatment for the native Californians here. The homeless families that are in Skid Row. They want the same treatment. But again, because you don't like what we say, that you wanna dismiss, ignore, slander, and then you go back to business as usual. I want to also thank Homeboy Industries for providing nutritious meals for the Latia Stevenson family yesterday. We really appreciate that. Uh, the cafe downstairs. Even though you guys can get housing correctly for this family, they provided nutritious meals for them 'cause at least they care. So I want this body to start acting like they know how to house people, to utilize the plans that have been submitted to you and execute them correctly. For the mayor's office to state that the county is the one that comes up with the funding for housing and homelessness.
And we're gonna hang up on you. We don't care about you or the boogers-on-the-wall lady.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Maybe they'll help her when she helps herself a little bit, stops having kids.
Uh, yeah, general public comment and all available items.
Okay, so the items that are available for public comment are 1 through 4, 46 through 51, and 57. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items first.
And executive compensation, what this is guaranteed to do, 'cause I'm not sure how many of you have experience or an MBA, but what you're guaranteed to do is hurt healthcare availability. In the city of Los Angeles, you may actually drive healthcare jobs out of the city of Los Angeles to neighboring cities. Think twice before you do this because as far as I know, no member of city council has any background in executive compensation, let alone healthcare compensation. It is the most un-American thing, but why don't you, um, put a cap on movie star or Dodger player compensation based on the same criteria? Why would you do it to an executive of one particular industry and not to high earners in every industry? Would you do it to the Lakers? Would, would you put a salary cap on LeBron James?
Yes, guy.
Or Jeanie Buss? Well then, why are you putting it on healthcare executives? What criteria are you basing it on? And who among you has any experience in executive compensation? You are also begging for a lawsuit for the unconstitutionality of it. That said, I'll save you some time and I'll go to general public comment. General public comment, uh, Mr. Cricorian the other day said he was shocked that Current Price was hit with a bunch of corruption charges. Mr. Cricorian and Mr. Price have worked together 13 years, three in the state assembly, a decade on city council.
Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Price have worked together thirteen years, three in the state assembly, a decade on city council. He voted on hundreds of agenda items involving Curran Price and Delbert Richardson Price. Did at no time in thirteen years, Mr. Krikorian, who expresses shock, say, "Hey, Curran, how is this not a conflict of interest? Why are you putting these agenda items on? Why are you not recusing yourself?" So Mr. Krikorian should explain for the sake of transparency, because I know Mr. Krikorian's a good man. How could you possibly work with Curran Price for thirteen years and explain why you were shocked that his voting on his wife's agenda items, which you did almost continuously approving them, how can you possibly be shocked by that? In the, in the spirit of transparency, please explain that to Mr. Krikorian. You and I disagree on things. And the only reason I'm bringing it here is because your office.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you.
That's right, Paul Martin Krikorian, you racist, pink-skinned Nazi pig motherfucker.
Mister, Mister Herman, be quiet. Don't disrupt this meeting or you'll be removed. I'm telling you this time and this time only. Now, there are a number of, uh, members of the public who came and tried to sign up to speak and they weren't able to. I need you to be quiet this mi- you wanna be kicked out? Alright, alright. Mister Herman has to go. Mister Herman is excluded from the meeting pursuant to rule twelve. Get out. Mister Herman is removed from the meeting pursuant to rule twelve. Get out of our meeting and leave silently. Stop disrupting this meeting. For the record, I was just about to call you to speak, but since you're disrupting the meeting, you are ordered to remove.
Bullshit. Uh, for the record, I was just a liar.
The fuck happened, Paul? You pink-skinned bitch? What happened?
For the record, I was just about to call Mister Herman to speak, even though I wasn't required to, but as a courtesy, I was going to do that. Instead, he's having a tantrum and disrupting the meeting as he's leaving. Leave immediately. Pursuant to rule twelve, Mister Herman is ordered excluded from this meeting. He will be subject to rule seven going forward. Now I'm gonna call the, a few of the names of the people who attempted to sign up but weren't able to.
I like it, because it's evil like me.
John Perez, Victor Vasquez, Mike Hernandez, and Carlos Sanchez, please. So if you could come to the left-hand side.
Lying motherfucker, wasn't gonna fucking let him in talk. He's such a lying sack of shit. He's such a lying fuck. He wasn't going to let nobody talk. You lying motherfucker, dude. Lying sack of shit, dude. He's just a liar.
Find out for all the fucking items we can speak on, sir.
Okay, so you have three minutes, right? Two and twenty-five through twenty-eight, followed by a minute of general, yes.
Yes, and the general comment period, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I'm ready to go?
Yes. Uh, which id- would you like to speak on an agenda item or a general public comment?
On the general public comments.
Alright, you'll have one minute, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, um, I'm part of the ass-needed truck haul program that actually works with the city, um, um, direct, uh, of, uh, oh goodness, um, street services. We are actually received a letter to terminate us as of, uh, June thirtieth. We've been around for a hundred and thirty-four years, the program has, and, uh, we like to have your assistance. Uh, it seems like, um, our city attorney Heidi Philstein Soto, um, has a predicament with the AB five and saying that we are actually, um, an employee, but we're not. And we abide by the law that was signed by Governor, uh, Newsom, which is AB five on their business-to-business. But the city has treated us as a person all these years. So we need to change that. They need to go and change that in order for this program to keep on building the streets and the safety of the Angelenos, you know, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
See, all them came late. They got to speak. It's not fair. They just pick and choose.
Gentlemen, my name is Victor Vasquez Senior. I am a representative.
Everybody should be able to speak.
The LA City Contract Trucking Association. We formed that association, because we pretty much had no choice. Every time we tried to communicate with, uh, Public Works or Street Services, they kept saying, "Well, why don't you guys, you know, form a group?" And we actually retained legal counsel from the Western States Trucking Association, and they are experts in the AB five law. They fought it at the, uh, at the, uh,
State level?
US Supreme Court and also at the California Supreme Court.
Federal level.
In California Supreme Court, they weren't successful, but in US federal Supreme Court, they got an injunction, because they found out that pilots, you know, that operate for UPS, FedEx, and, uh, they also are uh, independent contractors, and this whole country would shut down, and we've been working through an injunction. The difference with us and everyone else is that we're a unique program, minority-based, a hundred and thirty-three years, and we work in-house. We don't work for a broker. We, and we just want some more time to, the city to wake up and understand that, uh, this can be done. Specifically, city attorney. Thank you.
Good luck with that.
Thank you very much, sir. Next caller, please. Uh, next speaker, please.
What's up, wise guy? Hi, Bo.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Mike Hernandez, and, uh, like my colleagues here, I'm not gonna go up and tell you more about the program. I'm just gonna tell you, uh, what we want, you know, what we're pleading. Um, seems like the city attorney, uh, Heidi Soto doesn't want to renew our contract. I don't, we don't know why. Um, they're using AB five as an excuse. We're compliant. The city's not compliant. I don't, I don't think the city knows how to be compliant when it comes to AB five. We do. We got lawyers, like he was saying, that is working with the city, and they're still not even basically ignoring us. Um, my father and I have a contract with Waste Management, and we were able to get through AB five, work around it with lawyers, obviously, and everybody else too, Metro, um, what's the other one? Uh, the port. Everybody's still working through AB five and their, and their owner operators, just like us. And, uh, I think that I should, we should, uh, maybe try and talk to Heidi Soto and probably talk to her about this, what's going on, because, uh, there's gonna be a big lawsuit if, if they don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, bring it on. They don't care about any lawsuits. It's not like they're getting money out of their own pockets.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Sanchez. I'm also one of the.
They care if they lose.
Program, and I agree with everything that my colleague said. And we just have a question. If we can prove to the city of Los Angeles with attorneys, we have a hundred percent proof that we are exempt from AB five, why is it that we received a letter from Mr. Keith Mose saying that the only reason they're getting rid of this minority owner operators program is because of the AB five? We have proof through attorneys. Apparently, they don't want to listen to us. Why? It's all we want to know. Thank you.
Well, they're not listening.
Thank you very much.
They're just sitting there. In fact, there's not even half a quorum there. They need ten for a quorum. It's like five people there on that horseshoe. Who knows where the other five assholes are?
The council may now vote on items.
And just so we're clear, the, the starting salary on that horseshoe, the starting salary is two hundred and eighteen thousand a year, starting.
Alright, so we're gonna separate item forty-nine.
I assure you, he ain't making that. He's making more than two eighteen.
Item forty-nine, uh, because Mr. Lee has requested.
And that's why they don't leave. You wonder, "Why don't they just leave?" Well, because they don't have to. They've realized they can be as racist and steal and everything. The stealing part's tough, because then they get federally indicted like Curran Price did and, um, Mark Ridley Thomas. Both of them this year got indicted by the federal government for thievery. So there is that, um, but yeah, that's why. They've realized that you push them out, they'll make millions by a wrongful lawsuit by you terminating them unlawfully.
Mr. President?
So if not, I'll stay here and make two, two hundred thousand plus.
The ordinances for items.
Not to mention all the kickbacks. Aren't these developers and everybody to make sure the plan goes through? They're giving these motherfuckers money. If you think it's two fifty a year, you're crazy. More like a million a year or more.
Mr. Lee has recused himself and he has, uh, exited the chambers.
He recused himself and exited the chambers. Well, why?
Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Why?
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Look at that. Look how many votes they're missing. Still go all yeses.
There is a request to send item forty-nine forthwith.
With that objection, that'll be the order.
Crooked to the core, my friends.
Next to item number thirteen.
I don't know how to do anything legit. Nothing. They don't do anything legit here. They're all liars, thief, mother, le-thieving motherfuckers.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
They just told you they're spending five hundred thousand dollars on one street lamp. You goddamn know that we can get a fucking lamp put up for less than five hundred K. Come on, don't give me that shit. It probably wouldn't even be a hundred. So where's the other four hundred K going? Everybody gets twenty-five in the pocket?
Yes, thank you.
You get twenty-five, you get twenty-five, you get twenty-five, and that's what happens. Then they take their kids to Barbados on your money. Guaranteed, it's just like that.
But, you know, she really spearheaded this effort, um, and pushing forward the extension of the therapeutic van program. And just to talk a little bit about that, so when people are going through crises, there's different levels of response. Our highest, most precious response are our firefighters and police, but the PMR teams.
The ones you demanded to take your shot, your poison shot. Got it. Those guys.
Five of them stationed in our city throughout different fire stations, and they respond to mental health crises. These are psychiatrists. These are nurses that go out, and so I'm just really grateful for her pushing for the, the expansion and continuation of this program. Five teams obviously is not enough, and look forward to building, how, figuring out how we build out more of these teams. Um, but just again, thank you Councilmember Rodriguez for moving this forward, and I look forward to seeing how our next year of implementation goes and how we can tweak to expand it to fit the unique needs of our city. Um, because I know in some of the districts, it's responding to a lot of calls, so let's just put more air in these tires, but thank you so much. I urge an I-vote.
Thank you very much. Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was actually, I was critical of implementation of this program in committee, and I want to explain my vote particularly to my residents who have shown great concern about the implementation in the one-five.
Is he learning how to shave today? What the fuck?
What I am critical of. Uh, the therapeutic van, which I'm grateful for, which is in my district, is on Terminal Island. And Terminal Island has a couple of access points that are difficult to navigate and getting more and more difficult by the day. And so the therapeutic van in my district has the lowest usage. Um, and it will get lower if it does not move, because we are also doing some road repairs around the island, and we're, we're also going to be redecking the, uh, bridge, the Vincent Thomas Bridge.
See, there you go, Mitch.
The program does not.
So where's the other four hundred and?
My residents.
Fucking ninety thou plus.
Voting yesterday, but I will be voting yes, um, and also advising, I've advised the committee and I'll advise all of you that I will be seeking to move that therapeutic van off of Terminal Island into a more centralized location that will service the harbor area.
I know, Aton. Talk to their sound guy, Aton.
Yes.
You're closer to them than I am.
Program is great.
You could be there in ten minutes, bro.
And I have what is a, a failing program just in the harbor area, so thank you.
My shit's on eleven.
Alright, thank you very much.
They are on eleven right there.
Do any other members wish to?
Full blast.
Seeing none, let's go ahead and open.
Full blast.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Item twenty-eight.
And the reason they have low volume is because half these idiots don't know how to use a mic. They scream into a mic. They don't realize that a mic projects your voice, just talking, merely talking through it. You don't have to scream into it! So I think that's the reason why. He's constantly tired of fucking dealing with these sound issues, so put it on seven and call it a day.
Eight, uh, was amended, uh, by motion. Do any members wish to be heard on item forty-eight as amended? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. President, there is a request to send item forty-eight forthwith.
With that objection, that'll be the order.
Little baby boy.
Alright, that'll bring us next to item number sixteen, which was called special by Councilmember Roman for Cummins.
Yeah, he is sleepy.
I wanted to just make sure that I made a comment on this item. So this was a Public Safety Committee report that you all heard um, in the committee in response to a motion that we put forward after the period of rains that we had, uh, most intensely in January. Um, and the Emergency Management Department, at the request of our office, conducted an after-action review of what happened during that emergency period. Um, there were mudslides during one severe period of rains, and during another one, there were power outages across the entire city, but most concentrated in Council District Four. The report was really interesting to me. So a few things came out of this after-action report that I think are important for the entire council to consider. Um, there is a need for improved coordination, uh, both for information that flows within the city and between departments, as well as to council offices and offices of elected representatives, who sometimes end up being the recipients of questions for support um, and requests for help from the community. People are looking to us to have that information, but even within our office um, and across other elected offices, I did not find a clear.
Well, we did get a lot of rain this year, Jeff. Historical amount. During your, uh, during your, uh, during your global warming period, historic amount.
This review was initiated and conducted well, uh, by the Emergency Management Department, and I'm really excited to continue to partner with them to ensure that.
In fact, in the, in the, um, the western side of the Sierras, you know, you're, you don't hear about it a lot right now, but there is flooding in the backs, because the ice is, I mean, the snow is finally melting up there. In the, in the snowpack, you know, the base is usually around, you know, ten, twelve feet, but now it's almost twice that. So you have too much. They're actually trying to, uh, truck the snow out. They don't want to put it inside the lakes, which I think is stupid. You need the water. But they don't want to do that, because the water levels are already too high. So, in some places, not everywhere. So, what they need to do is truck it out somewhere else, but I guess it'll melt by the time you get it there, so what's the point, right? Right?
Of this, um, and how can you use that to ensure that requests from your community?
But we did get a lot of water this year.
So that's gonna be happening on September seventh.
Lot of rain.
At two-thirty, you'll get an invitation from the Emergency Management Department, but I also did want to share that with everybody here. Um, one other finding, which I think is really important, is that when the EMD puts these kinds of.
Oh, there are, what do you mean, Jimmo? Have you not watched the videos that I put up of them trucking out snow in, in Tahoe and everywhere else?
D U P is actually the front line of response.
Guessing you didn't see that the snow was over a stop sign. What's the, how, how, how tall is the top of a top, a stop sign? How tall is the stop sign top? Eight feet?
Incredible on the part of our department.
Ten feet?
But one of the biggest misses.
Of a stop sign. How tall is that?
Um, and I think that's something that.
Because they, they couldn't see the stop signs up there. That's how high the snowpack was. And then they were, they were putting the berms on both sides was so high. They couldn't put them anymore. So now they had to truck the snow down the hill and dump it in a field. Yes, that's what they are doing. I assure you, it is happening. Eight feet. There you go. Eight feet of snow. I showed you guys the live video of the dude driving around at four o'clock in the morning, and you couldn't see left or right, just nothing but hills of snow. Two and a half hours from where I'm sitting.
Yes, now you're just gonna hear from me for.
It does snow here, just not where I'm at.
I just wanted to take a minute also to, uh, talk about this motion, which I'm really excited about. Um, community school parks are not a new idea. They've been around for a very long time. Uh, but I think that there is a moment right now with a new superintendent in place, uh, with a few new, um, school board members and a real sense of.
Ten foot, six inches? There you go.
For us to be able to capitalize on this opportunity and to bring the city's commitment to bear on this. Uh, under Mayor Garcetti, um, and the Green New Deal, they had made a commitment to opening twenty-five community school park sites by twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-five, and we only have three right now. So we have a lot of work to do to ensure that we're actually opening up these sites. Um, and a lot of that work actually rests on the city, so I think it's time for us to revitalize this discussion to make sure that we can actually put a master joint-use agreement in place that incorporates the lessons we've learned from our recent struggles in putting these parks into.
Here's one quick sign I found.
And really make sure that we're opening up the door to these parks.
See what I mean?
So, uh.
You couldn't see the fucking signs anymore, bro.
For this motion and hope that we can move faster towards a lot of what we will set out.
California.
Thank you.
Right? That's what she's talking about. That's what she's fucking referring to, man. This year was crazy, bro. The snowpack was insane. Still insane. You, if you think it's completely gone, you're crazy.
Eleven ayes.
Alright, that, Mr. Clerk, I believe takes us to item number fifty-seven.
That is correct, sir.
Alright, so, um, before we take up item fifty-seven, uh, Councilmember Park, did you want to do your announcement now or you want to wait until after closed session? Okay, very good. Um, then Councilmember Roman asked to be heard before we go into closed session on item fifty-seven.
Why are you going into closed session? Come on.
Hopefully, the last time.
Idiots don't need to go into closed session. Ain't nobody in there left anyways.
Um, but I just wanted to say that um, I'm excited to be going into closed session to talk about this issue, which has been in the news.
We're all excited to.
And the city has been engaged with for a while. I think that there are other issues particularly related to communications with the tenants at the Skid Row Housing Trust sites that we can and should be taking up in open session. Um, we've been communicating with the city attorney to find ways to do that in ways that don't impact the receivership and the court case. Um, and I just wanted to stress in open session, uh, my commitment and the commitment, I'm sure, of this entire council to being able to do that.
These people digging out of the top.
The interests of those residents who are in these facilities.
Look at the berm.
And making those.
This is why they're trucking the snow out. Because after a while, there's so much fucking, what are you gonna do? Where's it gonna go?
All right, thank you. Uh, with that, we are prepared now to go into our closed session. So Sergeant.
I'm trying to find the guy that I showed you last time.
For closed session. Members of the public, uh, need to ask for you to step out now.
Man, get out of here. They're making everybody leave. The fuck? What's the difference? Pieces of shit. Let's see, here you are. Let's take a look at the top of the mountain. See, all pretty much gone. Joe Mem, do you remember when we were watching this very cam? These guys were going right down this way? They were going right down that, that track right there, that little, that trail. They were snowboarding down the trail. Do you guys remember? Maybe, I don't know, two months ago, three months ago? Yeah, now it's time for mountain biking. But do you remember? These are, this is the cam, these are the exact cam that we were watching. Packed with snow everywhere. Those were snowboarding everywhere. Now look at it. Yeah, I'm sure it does, Mr. Dome. I'm sure it does. Oh, look. Got the mountain bikes right there. That's sweet. So where are the people? They behind it on the next one? No? Or they just, what the fuck? Just two random bikes gonna ride themselves down the hill? What's going on? What's going on, man? Beautiful. Look, Lake Tahoe down there. Lake Tahoe right there. Beautiful. That's beautiful too, man. All right, let's go back to here. Do you guys want to stay in the closed session? There's really no point to. We should probably just take off, but uh, I'll let you guys uh, decide what you guys want to do. Go to the Elbow Room Bar. Oh, yeah, let's see the chicks at the Elbow Room Bar. See what's going on. Oh, everybody left. The two chicks left. I'll let you guys decide because I think they're done for the day. Stay or go? Put it in the chat. Stay or go? Let's see what's going on here. Let me get this one live. This one's not live too. Hold on. It is, now it is. Too early. Smoke one more. We can smoke one more, that's for sure. We could do that. We could do that while these ding-dongs come back. There's a stay. Stay, stay. There's three stays, four stays. Well, Aton, go get in your car and fucking go run from the cops so we don't even have to find one. You make it easy on me. I'll throw ten bucks on your bill. Well, go ahead and dab it up, Jay Clown. It's too early in the morning for me to be dabbing. I need to wake up. What happened with the school meeting yesterday? There was one arrest. Apparently it did happen. Uh, a little bit later than, than anticipated. Uh, what they did was this time they were ready. They were proactive versus reactive this time. So they set up a barrier between the two groups. Uh, they were still there yelling at each other. There was, excuse me, there was one arrest. Um, somebody was fighting with somebody there and uh, there was one arrest for battery, it said. That was it. Other than that, it was calm, I guess. Um, and I don't know what the vote was. I don't know whether or not the Glendale School Board voted to introduce LGBTQ uh, studies in school. Like, that was the whole point for the ones who didn't know. That was their whole thing. They want to start teaching the kids in the school about LGBT. Um, and the parents came down and were like, no, you know, this is not a part of the curriculum. This is not what they're supposed to be learning. You know, math, science, history, that's what we want them to learn, that kind of stuff. And some of them took it even further, like, hey, you know, stop being a fucking pedophile. Leave my kid alone. You know what I mean? So there is that. I need it, Terry. I need a fucking vacation. That's what I need. I don't know who's texting me. No, I wasn't, broski. Yeah. Yeah, no, we've been pretty, chases have been pretty weak lately. The last month, I'd say every chase has been like tw- ten or fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes or less for sure. There hasn't been one good, long, hour-plus-long chase that's been wild. Like, I just, I don't see it. I haven't seen it. I really haven't, so. Yeah, and we've been kind of jacked in that situation, but it is what it is. That's why we do the uh, you know, the meeting of hanging out together and then the LA City Council meeting too, just to give us something different. You know, I know a lot of people don't like watching the LA City Council meeting, and that's okay. Not here to force anybody to do anything, but I think what it is, is a lot of people think of it as a typical meeting, which is boring as fuck, and they're boring as fuck, I get it. But this has a lot of spice added to it. And the thing is, is we're watching it now, um, you know, quite a, quite a few months after all these shenanigans have happened. Uh, wait until something else explodes. I, I guess I guarantee you that the, the rest of those idiots are under investigation, I assure you. There's no way Curran Price was doing what he was doing all by himself without anybody else knowing. So the dominoes will fall. When they do, you know, if it's big enough, the city will react and then uh, you'll have that courtroom packed again like it was to where there was news media, four or five different news media stations with their cameras rolling live the whole fucking time in the chambers. You couldn't sit down. You could not. There was no sitting room. None. None of this, well, the first two rows were empty. No, all the rows were filled. Standing room only. You know, and I think after something else happens, that, that, that will happen again, and you'll see even crazier how it will become more crazy. I think that's really what I'm getting at, but. It's stand-up comedy. It kind of is, Ryan. I mean, people, it's quite outlandish, you know, it's, it's, it's that with free speech really, you know, um, melded into it. Because there's nothing they can do, these people, about you coming and exercising your right to free speech. Even if you wanted to go there and talk about smoking scan for fucking three minutes or one whole minute, you could. On the general, you know, general public comment. Soon as you start to, oh, I want three minutes for the, for the agenda items, as soon as you start talking about smoking scan on an agenda item, they're gonna tell you you're off base. And then we're gonna take you to general public comment, and that's why they don't like that, because if you ask for both, you get three minutes plus one, so you get four minutes to talk. If you want general comment, you only get one minute. And it's not even fair because they're not even letting everybody talk, so. Oh, sorry, buddy. I'm sorry, buddy. Sorry, buddy. You're welcome, ma'am staff. I mean, you know, the people is what makes it great. I, I mean, trust me, if it was just me sitting here, yeah, there's nothing great about me. You know, and so it's, I think it's the camaraderie, it's the, the room having fun with each other, the fact that one person comes in, it's their birthday, everybody says happy birthday, those, that, it's kind of that. People don't come here just to see me and stinks. They just, they don't. They come here to see you guys too. And hang out and talk with you guys too. Don't you guys see where so-and-so at it? They're asking each other where this person's at. They've become friends, which is the whole intention. That was my whole intention. You know, I don't like that shit-talking atmosphere all goddamn day. It gets nothing done. It gets nothing done. All it does is create animosity, and the fake motherfuckers don't have the nuts or guts to say what they're really feeling to a motherfucker sitting right next to them, so they play the part like they're their friend, and they're not. It's conducive to nothing. It's conducive to nothing, so. That's just the way I look at it, man. And uh, in this day and age, there's not many cool places to hang out. There just isn't, especially on the internet. So, yeah. It's hilarious, yeah. Uh, John, they're, they're busy having a cup of coffee, taking a shit, smoking a joint out back. They're still, they went to a closed session for nothing. You know, why else would you go to a closed session? Because you don't want to be transparent, correct? I mean, that would be the only reason, that you just don't want to be transparent. Want to hide what you're talking about and what you're doing. And that's why you want to spend five hundred thousand dollars on one streetlight. And just get away with it. And then where's the rest of the money go? Well, each, like I said, twenty-five K to all of them so they can bring their kids to Barbados. Mm-hmm. Now that twenty-five K goes to the, the first installment of their kids' tuition at USC. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. They're all fucking thieves. Every last one of them, they're disgusting. I mean, just absolutely disgusting. When I look at these people, I just see a, a hot, steaming pile of dog shit on a lawn. It's really what I see. I don't see no different. Well, I don't know if they're coming back, guys. I mean, usually they just kick off for a second, but they may close for the whole time and be done and be out, so I don't know. We might be done here. They want to hide. As they always do. Me for counsel? Shit, they don't want me on counsel. They'll get nothing if, if you think they get nothing done now, they really will get nothing done. I'll be a thorn in their side every time. I won't vote no for, I'll vote no on every one of their agenda items. Nope, oh, no, I'll be my Mr. Harland. Nope. There won't be any building on, I don't own that property, but there ain't gonna be any building on it. Five hundred thousand, I think we need an audit. We need an audit, screaming for the audit, and then they'd be, you know, trying to come at me. Ah, all he wants to do is audit everything. He's not a part of the team, man. He's not a team player. He doesn't want his twenty-five K. Well, I'll take his twenty-five K. We know you will, bro. That's the back deal. That's the back door. That's what happened. What am I gonna roll the joint for, Aton? I'm gonna blow my house out? Fuck with a big ass joint? Good. Daily disclosure? Because they don't want to disclose the daily doings. Why else would you be in a closed session? With a transparent TV channel, why would you go closed? Explain that one to me. Because I could only give you one reason. Because they want to hide. They don't want to be transparent to whatever they're talking about or doing, or they're just sitting there pretending like they are working off your two hundred fifty thousand dollars that they're making a year, plus all the kickbacks, while doing nothing. They just don't want to show you that they're all sitting around a room having coffee that you paid for, and Danish that you paid for, and, yeah. Let's be honest, while they're patting themselves on the back, telling you how awesome they're fucking doing and how great the city's running. The city look like it's running great? Tell me, can you give me anything in the last four years, just four? That's doing better than you've ever seen it? Anything in LA. And I mean anything. That city ran, of course. I don't see it. I don't see the streets cleaner. I don't see the streets smoother. Nothing. More homeless than ever, more graffiti, more trash than ever. Higher taxes than ever. Tell me, what is it? What am I missing? I mean, there's gotta be something. There's gotta be one thing. We're missing something, aren't we? What are we missing? I mean, just one thing. You can't give me one goddamn thing? Where are all the people that voted for these people? You should be absolutely, you, hopefully you feel ashamed for yourselves. Hopefully you do. You don't probably, but you should. See, you ultimately made the worst of choices. Because you can't, you couldn't give me one goddamn thing on a piece of paper that you're, that is generally better. Not one. Not one. Not one. Not, well, but there's, you know, that, you know, the golf courses are working pretty good. No, there's just nothing. Nothing. Why do you pay LA tax? Just move? Well, my whole family lives here. My whole fucking life is here. So it's not as easy as just picking up and moving, and I say, I'd love, I'd love to be the thorn in their fucking sides. Okay? Not uh, being the hypocrite. I'm telling you how it is. And that's that. Okay, I ain't the best person. But I could tell you what? You can meet any of the people that know me, and not one of them, not a fucking one could tell you that I owe them a dollar. Not one of them could tell you that I borrowed one US dollar, like, hey, man, can I borrow a dollar? Not one. Okay? And not one of them could deny the fact that when any of them ever needed help with anything that they ever called me for, they, that they didn't get the help. Whether that was helping moving your ass out of your house, whether that was borrowing my car because you didn't have a car for the day, whatever the fuck it was. Okay? Whatever the fuck it was. Let's go. Let's go. Aw, man, that sucks. Somebody was just starting, and the second he goes down the hill, they change the camera. That's fucked up. So, I'm just telling you, man. You have straight up people in life and you have people that aren't. And people don't like me because of the way I talk, because I have no filter. That's okay. One day they'll realize that whether they like what I say or not, at least not insulting their intelligence and I'm telling them the truth. That's it. I don't owe you nothing. You owe me nothing. You know, just um, I don't know, man. Too much bullshit out in the world, and these people out here are the same fucking way, bro. These people out here, uh, these, you know, the ones we watch on LA City Council, they're no different. Thanks, Aton. Much love, bro. Am I right, Aton? Aton, am I right about what I just said? I know a lot of people. I'm sure there's twenty people at B Real TV that talk shit about me, but not one of them could tell them that I didn't do anything for them if they asked. Not one I've ever borrowed a dollar or owed a dollar to. Not one. Right? There is that. Yeah, they don't like the unfiltered talk. It's like, you know what's funny? We're in a world, ladies and gentlemen, where people love the ass licker. They love the ass licker. They want to have their ass licked all day long, even if it's not true, even if it's fake as fuck. That's what we're in. We're in the world of fake as fuck. Just it. That's it. Come on, Aton. I've had a few people that have left that joint. More than one that don't even talk to each other, tell me that that was true, so. There is that, my friend. They wouldn't tell me that. Two separate people that don't hang out with each other told me the same thing, so. There is that. So, yeah. There's no reason for both of them to lie about something that neither of them were talking to me about the same thing at the same time. Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, his camera. I don't know why his camera does that. When I, when I, when I switch it, it goes off. I don't know why. Like, when I switch the scenes, for some reason, it undoes this camera. It used to stay. I don't know why. Yeah, I'm gonna put the scanner up for one sec. I'm gonna smoke one more. But that's the, you know, that's it. We're in the world of fake. You know, we're just in a world of fake. Fake fans and fake bullshit. Ladies love the fake stuff too, and they love fucking Kardashian. They want to look like that ugly chick who's not real, who doesn't really look like that. So now, they got all the fake shit. It's the world of fake. And trust me, if guys could get away with faking more shit, they would do it too. You know? We start walking around with big old fucking sausages in our pants and, and uh, I don't know, something else. No, they're still robbing, they're still at the stupid. No, they're still robbing. They're still at the stupid. Some dude on Obama Street laying on a mattress conducting lewd acts on himself? That's it. That's it. Man. It's too funny, man. Yeah, it's, it's just a silicone world. It is, man. It's a sad deal. People enjoy, like I said, they love the fake shit. They don't want somebody who's real around them. Send them on the straight and narrow, give them a real opinion. You know, not to say that my opinion's the most valid, because there is, it is, it is not. You take it for what it is. I'm not saying that either. I'm just saying, uh, I'd rather have somebody's opinion who's being honest with me, even if it's not exactly what I want to hear. That's all. I want real around me, man. That's it. I just can't hang around the fake. I'm done with it. Done with it. Dun dun dun. Cause you also realize that those people can't do anything for you that you couldn't do yourself, for yourself. So it's really at that. Uh, Aton, that was probably years ago though. They told me year, a couple of years back, so I'm sure it wasn't like, you know, nobody gives a shit about me over there. Ain't nobody talking about me over there now. That's what I'm saying. Maybe it was when I left. I don't know. I don't care. I don't know. I don't care. If I did, I would tell you. Real is how we grow. Absolutely, Tony. I agree with you there. You're right. You know what I mean, Vern? You know, I think that's a lot of what people identify with here. They understand that sometimes they don't like what I say, but they identify with me being real with them. Whether they like my opinion or not, it's besides the point. I anger a lot of people here, even folks that still come back every day. And I don't do that. I'm not here to do that to intentionally anger them. Certainly not. But I think I'd be insulting their intelligence by just being the puppet and shutting up. Just being the quiet little puppet. Just going along with everything. I think that would be more detrimental and insulting their intelligence. My, and that, that's my opinion about it. You guys are smarter than that. Well, most of you. Can't say all of you. Where's Elon at? If Elon's in here, he's mad at me now. Elon, I still didn't get my plads until you get my, until you get, until I see the plaid in my driveway. Yeah. And, and I want, I want back on Twitter and I want you to post my shit with an apology. This stream saved your life? I doubt that, George, but, or Jorge, but I'm glad to see you're here. Like I said, you guys make the stream just as much as the scanners and the cat do. Trying to explain that to you. People come here for you, Jorge. They do. You may not know it. They come here for Jim and Siz and Zora and everybody else and Tony. You have that one friend here. It's nice to have a fucking friend. Friends are fucking tough to find. Holy shit, they got stopped. Holy shit. They stopped the lift. Oh, man, are we, are we scared right now? They just stopped the lift. This shit's. Oh, man, look at him. Get the joint out, bro. Get the joint out. Hand me the lighter. Uh oh, what happened? This dude's walking up the hill. It looks like he's about to die. Look at him. What happened? What's going on? What's going on? Oh, it's going back. They, they turned it back on. Audience is dope. I'm trying to tell you, you think that, you really think that if there was just two people in here and me talking, that people would come and hang out? No. One of the attractions, you gotta remember, all the trolls, okay? The people that don't know this show, that troll. Friday night, they come in here, they see, I don't know, 1,500 in YouTube or something, right? That's about the number, 1,200, 1,500. You guys can all agree with me, just in YouTube, right? So the trolls are mainly there. They see a number over a thousand people in the room. They want to go bother. If there was 12 people in our room, I highly doubt they'd come in and bother us. It's the number alone, just the sheer number. And who creates the number? Not the cat, not me, not the scanners. You guys are the number. You guys create the number. 500, there's always a thousand or more, Jim. Just, how many times have you been here? I'll turn it off and turn it right back on and I guarantee you we'll get a thousand within, I'll, I'll put money on it. Within two minutes, there'll be a thousand people on YouTube. I'd be, I'd be willing to put my money where my mouth is. And that's not, that's not talking about a chase. We're talking about just hanging out. Now, if I put live chase and there's an actual live chase. Man, we'll have three grand in here, easy, quick, quick, 3,000. Which is nothing. It's not any big number to go crazy about. It's nothing. 3,000 people is nothing. When you have Dr. Disrespect, there's 25,000 people waiting for him just to turn it on. Just in a, he has a screen like this going on and there's 25,000 people watching. They're just sitting there talking to each other. Why? Because they're the champions club. They enjoy each other's company. By the way, they're still there, closed session. I think they're done. I appreciate you, Dutch. Shout out to you and the rest of the South Bay. Pedro in the house, 22nd Street in the house. All right, let's get this last one in. Let's get this last round in. As soon as, uh, your wife found stinks, she stopped begging you for a cat. Well, see, there's, he worked out for Billy. Billy could just not have to worry about having to pay or feed a cat. He could just turn on, look, there he is. There's your cat. And then, you know, when she's really chones and, and I'm not on, you could just watch a replay and there stinks again. So it works out for everybody. What color? Plaid, plaid is meant multicolored. It's just the fast version of the Tesla. Like the high end Tesla, the expensive one is a, is a, uh, is called a plaid edition. That's all. And it has a little badge on it. It's plaid. So you can see it on the back. Hi, Lonnie. Thank you so much. Yeah, I appreciate you. Oh, wait, you sent them? Oh, so it has his name. Oh, thank you, Lonnie. It just says Chris's, okay, so the seller's name is Chris. Lonnie, thank you for the cards. They're going in my collection. I, right here. I love them. They're going in my PC. I like the one in the bikini too. The strawberries all over it. It's great. Refractor. She almost looks different in this one. This is definitely an older, older pick. But this one, um, I like the refractor of the light. Fracks the light dope. Even on her belly, it's like cracked ice. Thank you so much, Lonnie. Now, just, you gotta remember these, um, you gotta remember these things. I send these all day. These are ESE envelopes, you know, like standard envelopes, um, and they have an eBay system. So these. So these. So these, uh, sometimes get lost. They actually do. I'd say I send about a hundred of these out every month, 100 a month. And I'd say about two every month get lost. No joke. So I just refund the people that, that they lose, you know, they lose the card and then, um, they're bummed, but they get their money back. And then I just, uh, that's cool. Look. Yeah. And then I do, um, and then I just get a refund from eBay. eBay pays me if it's lost. So it's kind of a, you know, just a, you know, it's kind of a honorary system. You hope it gets there because there's not tracking. They don't track it because it's 60, 60 cents to a dollar eight, sending it depending on one to three ounces. But I can send a $20 card for a dollar eight instead of four bucks and save myself $3, which, you know, when you're doing that three, four times a day, $10, $12 a day, it's big at the end of the month. So you're saying you want to watch Bob, huh? You say you don't want to wait for these fucking ding dongs? That's fine. We could do that. Yeah, cause the bar's not packed yet. There's only two girls in there. Need to get some more ladies. More ladies in the bar. There's one, there's one, there's three chicks, four chicks. Only four ladies in the bar right now. Play getting that early drank on. Get that early drink in on. Get that drank on. All right, let me see what Bob's up to. He'll go hang out with Sheriff Bob Fletcher live in his patrol car. St. Paul, Minnesota. Let's see what it's a lovely day, lovely day in St. Paul, Minnesota with the sheriff rolling live. Damon, can you please turn off the emoji in the chat? It's covering the chat up. What, what do you mean the emoji? What emoji? What emoji are you referring to? Talking about the cat cam? I don't think anybody wants that. I don't see any emojis come up. I mean, if you're talking about the little thing that, you talking about the money thing that pops up for 10 seconds? I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know. Heart emoji on YouTube. I don't know what you guys are talking about. Aton's there. Hold on. Aton said, on the mobile YouTube chat, there's an emoji button for users to hit. It covers up a portion of the chat. Well, how do I remove that, Aton? I don't even know. I can't even see it. Yeah, I don't, it doesn't even, I don't even know what the fuck you guys are talking about. Aton knows. Let's see if Aton sends me the, uh, the, uh, way to fix it. Oh, look who's up. Oh, look who's up. Oh, thank you. You're up now? That's it? It's time to wake up, go run around and play with toys, go watch the birdies? Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about. Really, I don't, I don't see it on my side at all, ever. I've never in my life seen any emoji that you're ever talking about. If you plunk 10,000 US cash right on the table in front of me and said, Damon, I'll give you one minute to figure out how to turn that thing off. Pretty much gonna say that you're gonna have 10,000 in a month. He ran the light. I don't even know. It's new. Okay, so that's even better. It's, so it's new that they put up. I didn't put it up. Yeah, report the hard thing, man. Head over to YouTube, call YouTube, that's right. Ask them, hey, man, turn that fucking thing off. And then I want you to ask them why they got rid of the thumbs down. And see if it's the reason why I told you it was. They probably won't admit it, but it's, it's goddamn the truth. You can't turn it off? See, Bob. Yeah, everybody's saying you can't turn it off. So that's something new with YouTube. You're gonna have to get out of YouTube, I guess. I don't know. Let me look. I want to see what you guys are fucking talking about. Oh, really? That's what you're talking about? That stupid little thing on the bottom? Man, it pops up a second later and you can see. Man, that, that, that has nothing to do with me, bro. There's no way to get rid of that stupid thing. That is really what you're talking about? That stupid little thing in the corner? Bottom right corner, the little heart that everybody's mashing? I've never seen hearts beer before. That's gotta be new. I've never seen hearts on this thing. In fact, they stole that from Periscope, didn't they? Wasn't Periscope the first to do the hearts? That smash hearts? Come on, smash hearts. Bah. I remember fools were smashing hearts. It's new to YouTube. It ain't new. They were doing that shit on, we were doing this shit on Periscope six years ago. Go look it up. Go look up for the ones who don't know what Periscope is, which is Twitter Live. Terrible placement. That's right. It is terrible placement. Like Jeff said, it's, there's nothing, you know? And again, it's totally just like Periscope had it on the bottom, just like that. But before, I think there was a toggle on Periscope. Obviously there's no toggle here. And again, I'm sorry that it's, um, annoying y'all, but, um, nothing I can do about that. And again, I didn't know it because I don't never watch myself through my phone. I, and I don't really watch YouTube through my phone, like, you know, even other people, I'll watch on my laptop or whatever. What's up, Matt? So it is what it is, man. I'm sorry about that. I mean, again, that's why we have several other places. I'll put the link tree up. So maybe, whoa, what the fuck? What the fuck just happened there? So wait a minute. How did that happen? Let's, hold on. Let's do this again. I need to see this. Hold on. Put this back. Let's see if that controls that again. Click the link tree. Sure does. How is the link tree? Bro, how is the link tree right now controlling my shit like that? That is so wild. So if I, if I don't click, you know, the chat to put the link tree in and I just hit the link tree, it controls the, the camera. That's so, the scene. That's so weird. And there's the link tree. That is so odd. Fuck yeah. Stream deck, just control the shit with extra buttons. I can't see later, man. We'll be out of here soon myself. Yeah, and that's new YouTube baloney bullshit that they've been, they stole from somebody else like they needed it. Like I don't, I don't understand the point of it. So you got rid of the thumbs up, thumbs down to get hearts? So now you get how, I don't know. I'm on kick, BJ. Have I considered it? Click the link tree, BJ, uh, that I just put in that chat room. Okay? Click it right there and we'll, we'll do it again. There it is, right there again. Click it right there. Go check it out. I'm on kick. I'm on rumble. I'm on kick live right now. I'm on kick live right now. YouTube making it cute? Yeah. Maybe more kid friendly? Maybe that's why they've been coming at me so, um, tough with the, you know, uh, You know what I mean? That's it. Next level. There's, there's levels and then there's this level. National, I'm glad that you were observing enough to, to, um, to see. It's good to see that you're that observant. Youtubes love kids. Yeah, they do. They love that. Isn't the biggest YouTuber that's still that little kid that opens kids, I mean, opens toys all day? It's like 10 and he makes $20 million opening toys? I got problems with fucking wacky D's, wacky D's.
Yeah, I'd like to get a 10-piece McNugget and, uh, a bunch of the Szechuan sauce. Like as much as you're allowed to give.
The wacky D's.
Excuse me, bitch.
Wacky D's. No, we're in St. Paul, Minnesota, Greg, with Sheriff Pop Fletcher. Yeah, no, I, I, I get that, Rooster. I'm just saying that, you know, with me, they'd be going after me like, extra tough. Yeah, no, I, I, I get that Rooster. I'm just saying that, you know, with me, they'd be going after me like extra tough. Kid's in jail now? No, he's not Ron. Stop it. That kid's like 10. He'd be in jail for it. He's gonna be in, he was like, started when he was four. He was like four or five, making fucking $10 million a year. And then he started making even more at like six and seven, became so popular. Opening up toys. That's all he does is open up toys. Tonka trucks and shit. Holy shit. You got the bank robbery right there. We don't hear those too often because we're never really on during the day, but there you go. Bank robbery. Bank robbery. Yeah, we don't hear those too often because we're always on when it's closed. I mean, we hear sometimes people getting robbed at the ATM at a bank. We hear that, but you never really hear the bank holdup alarm in the lobby going off. There you go. 211 in progress now at McDonald's. So while someone's getting robbed at they bank, he's robbing McDonald's with a gun. And think about what time is it right now? Fucking noon. Fucking 12:07. This motherfucker got the guts to roll in at 12:07 and rob you. Lunchtime rush. Could it be? Could it be more packed other than when you go in the morning? And there's 9,000 people right before breakfast is done? Like that's the only two times, right? Everybody scooting in that last minute trying to, oh man, hurry up and order your shit before the fucking time, man. I was in lunch. All right. So there are code six on the robbery suspect who just jumped onto the bus off of Soto. That other robbery was off of Soto. So I'm guessing that he left and jumped on a bus? Okay. There you go. So now the bus is stationary. The idiot with the gun who robbed McDonald's jumped onto a city bus. The bus is now stopped. They've got the bus surrounded and he's got a handgun. So there is that. Pretty awesome. Getaway bus. That's it shells. It's gonna be like Speed. You know what I mean? Like remember when Speed, they took the big ass bus through the city, but he, couldn't go under 40 miles an hour or blow up, something like that. Uh, the first speed movie wasn't bad. Speed three, do they have that Oscar? They really have Speed three? Ah, they go that deep into it? Okay. So they're making contact with the MTA driver. They are grossed Crystal, but sometimes you're forced to. I roll, I had to go home every day on a bus from, from a junior high. Then it wasn't the MTA, it was the RTD. But still just as, they call it rough, tough and dirty. That was the nickname for the RTD and now it's the MTA. I don't know what they call, the kids call it now, but, uh, yeah, I saw the first speed. I didn't, uh, certainly didn't see two or three. I don't know. Did I see Speed two? Is there a speed? I don't even know. I'm sure Oscar's probably getting me right now. I was probably even know Speed three right now. He's just talking about the bus right now. Live in the world being Speed three. Yeah, I'm sure they're graffitiing the shit out of him still, Oscar, right? I mean, I don't think that's changed. I blocked the memory like the rest of it. It is what it is, you know? Just crazy to see like how much, uh, bus passes have gone up. I remember it was like 16. 16 when I was buying them. You had to go to the MTA office and get, or RTD office and get that stupid little sticker every month. It was 16 bucks a month to get your sticker. Um, and then you could have unlimited, you know, fucking, um, rides, but, uh, now it's like over a hundred bucks. It's crazy. Mobile transit asylum? It's about right. That's it Jim. Uh, Wise Guy have not, I know of it, but I haven't watched it. I was watching one of the ones where they were doing the treasure hunting. Looking for, you know, sheiks, iron sheiks, curly boots. Things like that. Yeah, part. It's a hundred buck, over, over a hundred bucks a month to ride the bus, I believe. I'm gonna look it up right now exactly how much it is, but, uh, yeah, I'm talking about a monthly bus pass. Hundred and 22 bucks for one month. And if you're a senior, I believe it's $61. It's a dollar 75 one-way trip just to, there's your fare fee. One, a dollar 75 just to a one-way trip, one day pass to go, you need 350. Seven days is 1220, 1250. 30 days is 50 on certain bus lines. 30 days unlimited rides. So hold on, where's the other one that they just said 122 dollars? Where is that one? I want to know what that one does. Uh, where was that one? No. I just saw it. Said fares. I guess, uh, that's weird. Let's, let's click on here. I mean, even that is, is crazy to me. Hold on, Z1 pass, 30 days unlimited. Oh, on bus and rail, including J-line silver. See, that's what they do. Oh, only on the silver line. Like it's like some exclusive line. Fuck out of here dudes. Charge more. The fuck out of here dude. That's weird. Fucking weird. It's expensive, man. It's 90 in Boston for the combo bus subways. There you go. That's crazy. It's why you have all those people that try to skirt the fare. See, this is what I was reading. That's what I was reading. See regular price. 122. I mean, I don't know, Oscar, this is what I'm looking at. Like I said, you know, my mom would give me 16 bucks a month. I was in fucking seventh grade, eighth grade, you know? To, you know, because she couldn't pick me up from school every day. She'd be at work. So, um, you know, that's, uh, and they're still in closed session by the way. Um, yeah. Smells like pee. Yeah, there's so many weirdos. It's just not a conducive environment for, you know, kids and stuff. It's sad, but there's not enough, uh, like officers or people to be riding the buses to make sure things are good. Let's go look at San Diego. That's what I'm saying Ethan B. That's what I, that's what I was looking at. 122. It's insane. It's a lot. That's what I was saying. That was my helicopter. Look at the helicopter on the boat. Fucking villain right there. Bro, that is an expensive helicopter. Enclosed tail rotor and everything like that. You notice that? It's an expensive chopper. That is not a cheap chopper. Give me the best boat and the best chopper money could buy. Uh, thank you. And I want them both in white. Uh, we'll be live Friday morning, Wise Guy, for our next show and then Friday night for our normal Friday night show. It looks puny, but it really isn't John. It's dwarfed by that giant ass amazing goddamn yacht that dwarfs everything in the water over there. Even the pirate ship that's next to it. Look at it. Look at it. It's like a small city. It's like a city block. That thing is huge. I would assume it's some Russian oligarch Jennifer. You know, hiding his boat in the San Diego Bay. Michigan Damon, thank you so much for the bits. Good to see you. Yeah, man, that thing is just, exactly. It's just dwarfed dude. That helicopter is normal size. I assure you, it's just sitting on the biggest yacht you've probably ever seen with your eyes. Oh, it's gotta be a hundred, more than a hundred million dollars for that yacht. I'm telling you that yacht to go out for the day is probably 20 to $50,000 a day, just to take it out, just to roll around. Let's just go roll around the bay for an hour or two with the homies. Drink some champagne, some, you know, mimosas or whatever. Look at the aircraft here. Okay? That's how expensive that is. That's a whole crew of fucking 10, 15 people rolling that boat. Then you got somebody cooking your food for you too. The cost of the fuel alone's gotta be 10,000 or more to roll that fucking thing for a day. But again, when you're a person who makes a hundred grand a day or more, the fuck does it matter? There's people that literally make a million dollars a day clean, like after taxes, a million a day. So what does it matter to spend 50,000 to go out with your friends for an hour? Three hours out here. You know what I mean? At that point, you just gotta learn to enjoy it because you're not gonna die with it all. And that's their way of enjoying it. That's cool. Look at them all. Little race boats. Prestige Worldwide. It's like who's, who's, uh, who's, uh, what does he say to them? Who's sailing the boat? Shut up dad. Bang! Uh, so you can invest or what dad? Or take a ride down to the Titanic? Yeah. Well, they say they're hearing some sounds, which is a good thing. Maybe they're beating on the outside of it. Maybe they're still alive. Let's hope. It's all you can hope for. They have, so they say 30 to 40 hours worth of air, which is fantastic. And they've say now they're bringing out more ships, which I figured, well, you would have done that anyways, but you know, I guess reactive, not proactive, but yeah. Cause I'm sure if you would have been in contact with that billionaire, that's, man, I don't care what it costs. Get him the fuck out here. I don't care if it costs 200 million. You get every fucking ship out here for the goddamn day and you find us. Sure. You know, a guy that owns some shit like that? Come on, man. You, you fucking find us. I don't care what it takes. You don't go home today. You know what I mean? So we'll see. We'll see. I mean, I, I think it's, you know, cold crutch death, cut depth. You know what I mean? They just went down after having no propulsion and squished like a grape. Which again, if it happened to you like that, you wouldn't even notice. It would just happen. And that would be that. You know, it would just happen. All, all those billions are pounding on the sub whatever. Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, you can't, no matter where they're at, you can't swim up to the top, even if you got your way out, right? Benz would kill you. You're literally stuck. Your money, nothing's gonna get you anywhere. That's it Jim. Just flattened like a can. Like you remember when you step on a, you crush a, a Coke can with your, with your foot? And you're a kid recycling, just like that. It'll be literally just like that. That'll be the end of it. That'll be the sad part, but I think that's what happened, to be honest. If they find these people, oh boy, it's the biggest movie ever. Biggest movie ever. That dude's company is gonna be through the roof. So there you go. That's the, I guess they didn't catch the guy that robbed the McDonald's or there's two McDonald's that got robbed? Okay. So the possible suspect on the bus apparently wasn't the suspect. So apparently the dude got away. So they just, I'm guessing they thought the dude jumped on the bus, stopped the bus at gunpoint and got everybody off probably and then found out that it wasn't the guy. And by the time they did all that, homeboy got away. The guy who just robbed the McDonald's with the gun, with the extended clip. Or extended mag, sorry. It's not a clip. Mag, 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 mag. Or I hear it in the chat room. So I guess that's it though, guys. Um, I'll see you guys on, uh, I will see you guys on the next one. Um, you know, maybe we'll get us a chase and you'll see me back on, but if not, you'll see me on Friday morning, 10, uh, 15 AM. For our fabulous LA city council meeting next one, of course, and of course Friday night for our Friday night fun. So other than that, I want you guys to have a fabulous day. Enjoy the rest of your day. Enjoy the hump. The hump. The hump day. So you guys be good. Enjoy the rest of your week. Um, and I guess that's it. Thank you so much for the likes, the love, the retweets, or not the retweets, because we're not on Twitter. Likes, loves, thumbs ups, donos. The cards Lonnie, the shirt. Thank you so much. Catherine, thank you so much for the big barrel. We're gonna use that on Friday. I can't wait. And, uh, I guess that's it. You guys be great. Keep it greasy. Uh, meat chamber and, uh, I'll see you guys next one. Oh man, it went twice. Oh man, that's terrible.